To order. We have a quorum this evening. Six board members are in attendance. Mrs. Phelps is not. And I have a motion to approve and adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bralene to approve the agenda. Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Onto item two, closed meeting. Be it resolved the school board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and consideration of student disciplinary appeals as permitted by section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. We are now in closed session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. Do we have a motion to certify?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine. Roll call votes starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Graham, aye. Motion carries six zero. Items from the closed meeting. Dr. Martin.
Madam Chair, there are two motions coming out of closed session. First motion is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, resignations, and retirements as presented in closed meeting and permitted by section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Second motion is that the school board upholds the recommendation of the superintendent following a review of a record of a student matter as discussed in closed meeting and permitted by section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. That brings us to item 5.01 on the agenda. We are now in recess unless there are any objection. Good evening. Do we have a motion to return to open session? Motion by Mr. Braswell.
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. We are now in open session. Mr. Twig, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where rich stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item seven, there is no public hearing this evening. Consent agenda items. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening are the minutes of the November 12th, 2018, a regular meeting, and donations which are usual and customary. Staff ask that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero to approve the consent agenda. Please note they're informational items with the agenda as distributed. There is no instructional highlight this evening. Recognitions and awards have been moved to January. We time for public comments. Dr. Martin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes. We ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Trey Talmage.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Trey Talmage. I am in the Lees Hill District on Watford Lane in the Lees Hill area, and I am the president of the Massaponics Band Parents Association. I have been so for the last five years, and it's come to my attention with the disestablishment of the activity fees that the board has been discussing how the county can better support marching bands and possibly eliminate marching band fees at one day. First, I'd like to thank each of you for your consideration in this area. Our band students work extremely hard throughout the year, and I appreciate the board's recognition of their efforts. It's important to remember that marching band fees existed way before the establishment of those athletic fees. Now, I've had discussions with directors and booster associations in our county about those fees, what each band charges, and how those funds are used. And while we can certainly explore possibilities of future removing of those fees, I believe that there's a more practical way that the board can be immediately and impactful to give assistance to the band programs. My opinion, the most expedient way that you could help us in this is to pick up our transportation costs. This is something that I think is, it would be a big help to our band parents. The Massaponics Band Parents Association spends by ourselves about $6,000 a year in transportation. These cover our trips to competitions, as well as, both in the fall and in the spring, as well as our yearly visits to the Spotsylvania and Fredericksburg Christmas Parade. Just as an anecdote, that one parade day, we spend almost $1,000 in transportation costs. So you start to do five cents a mile, $20 an hour, times three buses for both parades. Those things add up very quickly to our band program. And, you know, while we're glad to support those activities, that's an important day for us in terms of community service. Financial support for those travel costs would be huge for our program. That first step would allow our band to redirect funds to really other significant areas of need that we have. You know, given that the original intent of those activity fees was to help offset transportation costs, that's also a pretty logical and reasonable first step and commensurate to what you might be doing for athletics and other programs. You know, in addition to those travel expenses, of course, our Parents Association is covering most of the other expenses of the band, to include, we are buying and repairing school-owned instruments that we're paying out of our funds and giving those to the band program. We are paying staff members for the marching bands and the spring performance ensembles, and we are replacing uniforms at a cost of about $50,000, which we did three or four years ago now. And while I'd certainly love to be involved in a future conversation about those things, travel expense is the most reasonable and pragmatic place to begin with this conversation. I stand ready to support the board in any way that I can in this matter. I'd be glad to meet with board members or be a part of a group that was put together to explore future possibilities there. Our Band Parents Association will be more than happy to open our financials, let you all have a good understanding of what it costs to run 120-person band program in this county, and, you know, we would be more than happy to help facilitate that conversation. And I personally would be glad to be a part of or lead a group to do that. My contact information is on the signup this evening, and would look forward to hearing from you on that matter. With that, I thank you again for your consideration, for your support of our county band programs, and I hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you for your time.
Good evening to the board and Dr. Baker. I am Renee Beverley, Six Pond Circle, Fredericksburg, Virginia, and I am the president of the Spotsylvania Education Association. I'm also a teacher at Chancellor Middle School and an active citizen in the county. I'm very concerned about adequate funding for educational programs, class size, teacher salaries, and our district schools. As you may be aware, the governor of Virginia announced a 5% funding for teacher salaries and increases across the board for funding our schools. The nurturing and supporting of this decision lies not only with us as educators, but with you, the board, parents, PTA, local civic groups, students, and concerned citizens of this county and state. Through education, we are helping students by developing important skills and attributes that are essential for their success. We need to lobby our local representatives in the General Assembly and board of supervisors, encouraging them both to put kids first and fund our schools. Cuts in funding would be very detrimental to our district and the students served. I strongly encourage you, the board of supervisors, to recommend funding allocations for education in the district budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Meanwhile, here's some basic information about how important funding plays a big role in the complete education, and I'm sure most of you know this formula. But Virginia public schools are financed through a combination of state, local, and federal funds. The private sector also contributes through partnership with schools and school divisions. The appointment of the state funds for public education is a responsibility of the General Assembly through the Appropriations Act. General fund appropriations serve as the mainstay of state support for the Commonwealth's public schools, augmented by retail sales and use tax revenues, state lottery proceeds, and other sources. Counties, cities, and towns comprising school divisions also support education by providing the localities, shared to maintain an educational program meeting the Commonwealth's standard of quality. While public education is primarily a state and local responsibility, the federal government provides assistance for state and local education agencies and supports specific federal initiatives and mandates. Additionally, you can access more information about the state's recommended funding for education and its impact online through the VDOE and the governor's office. And I would like to add that as teachers, educators, and friends, we do wear red on Wednesday to support any educational funding because we truly believe that the kids are our future, and we want to make sure that kids come first. So I hope you join us in wearing your red on Wednesdays as well. Have a Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Graham, board members, Dr. Baker. My name is Peter Fotenhauer. I live in the Battlefield District. My exact address is on file. I am the Political Action Committee Chair of the Spotsylvania Education Association, and I wanted to take some of your time tonight to reflect back on the year of 2018 because it's been a year where we've seen educators in other states take unprecedented steps to call attention to the needs of their students and their schools for increased funding from their states. I'm sure you're familiar with events that took place in West Virginia, Oklahoma, Arizona, even in North Carolina. Communities stood up and said that their schools deserved better funding, that their students needed safe schools to succeed in, and they drew attention to those needs through organized community action. Virginia is also changing in how it is approaching the state's lack of fulfilling its constitutional obligation to fully fund a public education system of high quality and maintain it. Virginia is the 12th wealthiest state in the United States, but we rank 42nd in state per pupil spending. Virginia teachers currently earn $9,218 under the national average for teacher salaries, ranking 34th in the country, and Virginia teachers rank dead last in the percentage of their income that they could earn if they were working in a job that required similar education levels and certifications. There are currently at last count on the VDOE website 1,000 unfilled teaching positions across the state of Virginia. Since the Great Recession in 2008, Virginia's state funding of K-12 schools has declined 12% when adjusted for inflation. And most telling of the impact of this lack of funding on our schools is that after five years on the job statewide, 40% of our teachers are leaving Virginia classrooms for other employment. School board members, Dr. Baker and staff, I ask you to join with many of your employees who have taken a pledge to wear red for ed every Wednesday for the foreseeable future. We're wearing red for ed to call attention on Wednesdays to the needs of our students, to the needs of our schools, to the need for our community to begin taking a stand to say enough is enough, that we can only do so much relying on one of our three funding sources to provide consistent funding. Our local board of supervisors has not always been consistent, but they have done difficult work in trying economic times to find funds to meet the needs that you all identify in your budget. I will be presenting, Dr. Martin, with a copy of a wear red for ed resolution that we would like you to consider adopting at your next board meeting that lets members of the community know that it takes an entire community to educate children. As the people on the front lines, in the classroom, driving the buses, seeing the six students in the clinic, working in the libraries, being classroom aides, and delivering instruction, teachers work miracles every day. The miracle is that given the support we have not been getting from the state lately, that we are able to succeed as often as we had. Please consider in addition to adopting the agenda, taking a picture of yourself next Wednesday, wearing red, something red. Take a photo, post it on social media. We're excited to see you share your photos with us so that we can share them with the community and with our members. Thank you, and have a very merry and joyous holiday break.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that's all the speakers that signed up.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak that did not get a chance to sign up this evening? Seeing no one, that will bring us to item 13, special reports. We will begin with board committee reports. Does anybody have board committee report? Mr. Braswell?
I just want to mention that I had an opportunity to look at the Cortland renovations, and everything is ahead of schedule. If you get an opportunity to stop by and see the work that's being done, you'll see great progress being made at Cortland High School. It's going to be a beautiful edifice, and I'm looking forward to it being fully open for its full use. It's going to be a great educational facility.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Ms. Graham. I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting this past week, and well attended, again. Our Student Support Services went over some questions that the parents had at their open forum back in October, and then there was a presentation on social skills, and it was a very good meeting with some very good information that I even took back to my school. So I want to thank the Office of Student Services for a wonderful meeting, and our Parent Resource Center for always putting together that meeting for CAC because it's always a wonderful meeting. And that's that.
Dr. Meyer?
The Local Finance Board met earlier today looking at a policy recommendation that should be forthcoming through the board for our next meeting, and how this board can be proactive in its planning for our OPEB obligations. Also, the Strategic Planning Committee has begun its deliberations and will be meeting over the next six months as it lays out a plan looking to the future of what this division would like to be accomplishing. You know, not that we, we do have a very good strategic plan, but it's been two years, and it does need to be updated to reflect the profile of a graduate, and we need to make it a Spotsy graduate. So that is forthcoming. This last week, I attended a kind of a planning meeting at the request of Mr. Wilcox from the Department of Ed with Carol Flannard, our Assistant Superintendent, and looking at some legislation that came, that has been considered by Delegate Davis. It applies to whether there should be one or two diplomas, and also what are the barriers that are there for career and technical education when you compare that to the efforts that are being made along the lines of advanced placement and college bound, and the emphasis, how do we support 16 different pathways that exist through career and tech CAT program? And so that was part of the discussion. There were about 20 of us that were part of that, and it was interesting to see the discussion that is occurring, you know, at the state level. We'll see what comes out in the future.
Any other board committee reports? Brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I want to first wish all the members of the board, as well as our staff, our parents, our community, and our students a wonderful holiday season and a long, a well-deserved break that is coming up. I hope the board will just indulge me for a couple of minutes. I am going to provide some clarity. I know that back in November, staff and I shared a pretty comprehensive presentation with the board, and I know for some of you it was the second time, but it was in reference to an expanded vision and concept that we are exploring for the future, and it was entitled "The Specialty Center Concept." If it's okay, I just want to provide some clarification about that. First, directly and explicitly, that concept is aligned with the Spotsylvania County Public Schools Board adopted strategic plan. It's aligned directly with our mission, vision, core values, and strategic goals. The concept is not something that has just come about or that we have been looking at in isolation, but we have engaged many stakeholders and groups over the past few years, including staff, teachers, and building leaders, division leaders, parents. I have a parent advisory over the last five, six years that at least multiple times has had engaged in not only looking at that concept, but understanding that there's a foundation of that concept that has to do with the future economic market and the jobs of the future, and what our students need to be developing skills to be prepared for. We also have presented it to our PTA and PTO leaders along with their building principals. We also have partners in education, some key partners in education that we work with, including Germana and the University of Mary Washington, and even business leaders, some from the CTE Advisory. My student advisory stand, Students Taking a New Direction, has also engaged in multiple conversations about what not only the future classroom and school should look like, but what types of learning experience will best serve them in their life-ready journey. And we have presented, as I mentioned earlier, twice to the school board over the last two months, including the public presentation. And while there's been no isolated or quiet implementation of a superintendent's vision or any sort of a secret that we've been trying to keep, in fact, it's hard to keep secret because we're very excited about the potential. But the only thing that has been implemented that the board has adopted over the years has been the International Baccalaureate Program and the AP Capstone, and those are only added to support rigorous academic programs, to expand those types of opportunities for more students, and we have done that, and appreciate the board's ongoing support of that. We just recently, this year, have piloted a few different courses in the visual and performing arts, and those were developed, those courses were developed by teachers who participated as a study and focus group over the last few years and wanted to provide those opportunities for students to see what types of excitement they would get. And so far, the students have been very excited about those opportunities. There's never been an intention or a communication shared regarding converting all high schools into full magnet schools where current or traditional studies and diploma tracks would be eliminated. That was never a part of the concept. It was merely how we could feature and expand those opportunities for students who would need them. There also are presently no implications or use of bond funding for specialty centers other than what was voted on and supported through the referendum. Please keep in mind, and I think this was also shared recently, that we have been implementing specialty centers here in Spotsylvania for decades, including the Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center, the Commonwealth Governor's School, and JROTC, and we are looking to expand those kinds of learning opportunities for more students based on future career, college, and life readiness needs. We are now, as is shared in greater detail, and we have shared in greater detail, at a stage where we are asking for the board's feedback and direction and support to further planning and potential feasible implementation that will lead to developing or exploring with greater detail certain aspects of this plan. And let me just say this so that it's very clear. We can do nothing without the school board and the county and the community's support. We certainly cannot add any costs. We cannot do anything that does not have that support. So in essence, if it's not wanted or needed, it won't happen. But potential costs of startup and recurring over time will be things with this board's, you know, support. We will try to cost out, but that may not just include extra costs or added costs, but also potential shifting of costs or investments over time. We also have already begun and continue to try to compete and access different grant opportunities to support some startup of different pilot programs, including the specialty center concept. We also are going to continue to be looking at how and when, those are going to be two big questions, for actual implementation with feedback and approval from the board. So I just want to close my report by saying that I truly do wish, because I want the best for our students and I want the best quality schools for every student, I wish that I and the staff, along with the board's support, were in a position to be implementing this concept. That is not the case, though a great deal of thought and vision has been put into it. In the end, if the board, community, or both do not wish for me or the staff to advance this concept or vision as I just shared, it won't happen. I'm not familiar with how the board would develop the structure for any other types of soliciting of feedback such as a public hearing based on where we are currently, but we were going to, we are going to continue, if it's okay with the board, to engage different citizen groups and stakeholder groups, and that has really helped to bring us to where we are today.[1798.04][1798.04] we are today. I do believe and will continue to advocate for better engaging all of our students through relevant and meaningful learning experiences that support career, college, and life readiness. I think all of us have been students, so we can all imagine what would we want or need as students. And I really believe that the most important thing is that students wake up every day with a purpose for going to school, not to endure it, not to survive it, not to make it through, but they look forward to the day-in-and-day-out experience because it has significant meaning for their future. So thank you for letting me provide that clarity.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. That brings us to item 14, Action Items. And Ms. Gaines, if you would join us for 14.01, 02, and 03. I think they are all yours.
Beautiful.
Let's start with Budget Amendment Number 7.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. At the last pre-budget work session on November 26, staff had shared that we are going to incur debt service savings of 2.6 million. Per the county, based on how the 2019 bonds were structured, we will be required to make an interest payment, but no principal payment. Thus, as promised tonight, we're here to present to you some uses of the C I P funds. Number one, the estimates include the following. $150,000 for a security frame on the glass. $750,000 for alterations to main entrances, to include, of course, the design and construction. $675,000 enhanced exterior lighting. Of this amount, 1.6 million. 1 million was previous in the C I P years 2020 and 2021, but the goal is to move these funds up for school and safety initiatives. $750,000 intercom replacement and upgrades. 100,000 swipe card access controls. This total is 850,000. 600 of this was already included in the C I P for 2022 and 2024. And then lastly, 186,000 devices for our special needs students. In total, this is 2.6 million, and at this time, staff is recommending that the School Board approve Budget Amendment Number 7 as presented. We will reduce the debt service of, service of 2.6 million, and we would increase C I P of 2.6 million, as outlined this evening.
So moved, Madam Chair?
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine, to approve Budget Amendment Numbers, Amendment Number 7 as presented. And it's discussion time. Mr. Twig, I think you had your hand up? Oh. Does anybody have anything for the discussion? All those in favor of approving Budget Amendment Number 7?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Ms. Gaines, if you would move on to Budget Amendment Number 8.
Thank you. As you are aware, with the recent allocation of 2018 carryover funds, 300,000 was allocated to our schools. In order to be complying with V D O E, if the schools are wanting to spend any of these funds in technology, we would be required to do a categorical transfer. Based on input coming from our principals and our staff, we're recommending to increase technology by 66,000 and decrease instruction by 66,000. At this time, staff is recommending that you approve Budget Amendment Number 8 as presented. The net impact is zero.
So moved, Madam Chair?
Motion by Dr. Meyer to approve Budget Amendment Number 8 as presented. Second, second with from Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Gaines, if you would move on to Budget Amendment Number 9.
Thank you. The proposed budget amendment of 259,000 will fund the school's prorated share of bond issuance costs. This allocation has already been appropriated by the Board of Supervisors. This is simply the bookkeeping. Staff is recommending that you approve Budget Amendment Number 9 as presented.
Motion by Mr. Braswell to approve Budget Amendment Number 9 as presented, second by Mr. Twig. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Budget Amendment Number 9 as presented?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 15.01, Board Member Comments. Mr. Blaine, would you like to start us off this evening?
Yes, I would. Two things. I want to thank our staff, especially this evening, and all of you who are here for just even attending the meeting, and our visitors as well. It certainly helps us, keeps us toeing the line a little bit more to know that people are looking at what we're doing, and we want to be sure that we're trying to do the right thing all the time. But more than that, we heard a little bit earlier about the availability in our closed session about the availability of teachers, and there's a shortage nationwide, as we know. And we look at the job that you do and the people that you work with as the most significant people in our society, frankly, and the biggest need. And you're doing a job that enables America to develop as it should as a leadership in the world. We need that, what you're doing, and I'd like to thank you and compliment you on dedicating your professional life to one of the most important jobs that's available for an American today.
Mr. Twig?
I had the pleasure of attending several events recently, actually all within this past week, I believe. Livingston Elementary put on a dynamic Christmas festival for all of their students, and Cindy Franz, and hats off to you and your team. As always, do a wonderful job caring for and taking care of our young youth out there in the southern part of our district. That was a lot of fun. Attended Rayleigh's Chorus last week, and then got the Post Oak Middles, sixth grade band, and then seventh and eighth grade bands. And I've talked to both chorus directors and band directors at each of those schools, all three of those schools, in fact, and it was a pleasure to see their hearts and hear their music. I was totally amazed, and I'm an appreciator of good music, and I was amazed at the sound our sixth grade band put out there at Post Oak the other night. Totally impressive. But as we plan to and hopefully accomplish in this year's budget, enhancing cost of doing business funds for our music program, I'll be asking this Board and Dr. Baker's, his team plans, and cost out support in the, additional support in the music arena, that we don't forget and we, in effect, remember to include our elementary schools and our middle schools when it comes to instrument support and maintenance, and maintenance, like the gentleman stated, and also just little 10 and 100 dollar expenses. And we're only talking 100 to $2,000 per school for those who have band. I think we have two elementary schools and then a bunch of these young chorus groups as they're formulating and presenting great sound at a young age. I know for a fact, or was told by Post Oak, that they've had about a 20% margin of increase in musicians this year, or maybe last year, but definitely this year. And that only speaks to the band going up 20% in one, two, and three years. And that's exciting. And if we can enhance that, those programs with just a little bit of financing, it will go a long distance in supporting those programs and allowing our students in those bands and courses to accentuate their talents. So I look forward to working with our Board to pushing toward that end. And again, I appreciate everything you all did at those schools I was at. It was, each of those events was a pleasurable evening. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell?
I'm going to reserve the majority of my comments for new business, but I want to thank the gentleman from Massaponix Band. He gave us some very cogent courses of action to consider in helping our band parents, and I look forward to engaging him in some more detailed conversations so that we can do our part from the division's perspective to help out our high school and high school bands. So I'll leave my other comments to new business.
Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thanks to Dr. Baker for providing the clarifying comments, and also wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Be safe. Thank you.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. I thank the speakers for coming out this evening. Mr. Talmadge from Massaponix High School, when I was chatting with him prior to the meeting, I had, he said he was a band parent, and I said, I brought that up a couple of times. I said, and I said, one of the places I'm looking at starting would be transportation. And he said, did you read my speech? So I know there's ways that we can help our music programs. I've mentioned before, transportation would be a great way to start, so it was kind of nice to hear that coming from somebody else as well. We do need to support our fine arts. The people who talked about school funding, I understand. I'm with you. We all understand the funding issue that we have here in Virginia. We had a legislative reception a few weeks ago here with some of our area general assembly member, and actually someone from Senator Warner's office that were here. And one of the things that was brought up, and I actually brought up, was our funding for our schools and our teachers, that we are so far behind. It looks like Virginia does not care about their teachers. And I don't want that to be true of Virginia, because Virginia does have wonderful schools. But the fact that we are underfunded, lower than most of the states, and then that our teachers are in the bottom of funding for our states, and I even mentioned that it's probably skewed, because when you look at Northern Virginia and what they get paid, if you just take out Northern Virginia, if you, then the numbers would be much, much lower for our average teacher salaries. So I thank you for coming out and mentioning that. We do need to talk to our people in Richmond to support everything that is related to our schools, because our, the per pupil funding, I think is still kind of antiquated the way we do it now, because all our students are not created equal. So per pupil funding is probably not the best way of funding our schools anymore. We need to be looking at our whole student. And when we have a student enrollment of our special needs population that continues to grow, and our students that are speaking a second language, we're teaching them English as their second language, and those numbers continue to grow, and our students in poverty, and that's growing, that all students are not created equal. So, and educationally, that it would be nice to look at, look at how we're funding our students in the future. And I think that's all, but I really want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and enjoy your friends and your family and your break. Merry Christmas.
Good evening. I just want to add a couple points to Dr. Baker's points that he pointed out, that we appreciated very much, but I think one very critical thing that has not been mentioned in any point in time that we have discussed specialty centers with parents, with stakeholders, with businesses, with the Board, with publicly. We've never used the word magnet schools, because magnet schools and specialty centers are not the same things. Magnet schools are not inclusive, yet to apply to them. They serve a specific population. Specialty centers are located within a school that is inclusive to all, and it takes care of multiple students' needs while offering a specialty at the same time. So we have never discussed magnet centers, which was discussed elsewhere and put, said that we were discussing that, but that is not something that we have brought up ever. So I wanted to make that clear. And on that note, I also want to wish everybody a happy holiday and amazing break. And I'm going to keep us moving. And that brings us to item 16.01. Does anybody have any unfinished business this evening? Bring us to 16.02. Does anybody have any new business this evening? We will start with Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, for one, appreciate fully the work that all of our employees do in support of Spotsylvania County schools. And we know that on the 20th of December, our students will enjoy a well-deserved Christmas break or winter break. And a lot of the teachers that are 10-month employees and 11-month employees will enjoy that break as well. But we are a division that includes not only 10- and 11-month employees, but 12-month employees. And quite a few of them will be engaged in activities over the break that they could very well do at home if they, if it were required. The expense that it takes to heat up a building and to use the electricity to engage the building to have those employees come to work on those particular days, we could actually save money by keeping the building closed. And do something for our 12-month employees to encourage and inspire their morale. Quite a few of them work far and above what is required. A lot of them stay in marathon School Board meetings. God bless you all. Some of them are staying at school late for athletic events. The amount of overtime that a 12-month employee puts in is, I wouldn't want them to give us the bill, because we probably would owe them a lot. There are other schools throughout the Commonwealth that close during that time period and allow all their employees to have a break, to refresh, to receive respite. Henrico County does, North Hampton County, and Hampton City all allow for that. And I think that it'd be a great thing to provide an opportunity for the 27th and 28th of December as a way of saying to our 12-month employees as well that we appreciate their hard work as a day off. I am going to make a motion that we, as a Board, vote to make that a day off so that they also can enjoy their holidays, get respite, and hopefully come back inspired for an invigorating budget season next year. So my motion is on the floor to offer all employees enclosed school system on the 27th and 28th, so that all employees would be able to enjoy those days off. And that's my motion on the floor, Madam Chair.
Second. Motion by Mr. Braswell to make the 27th and 28th of December of this year holidays for all staff. A second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion?
Yeah, I heard here, I think eggnog, Christmas carols, and a lot of food at Berens House is in order if you take the day off, but don't consider that a friendly amendment.
Any other discussion?
Have you any suggestions how the work that normally is done at that point will be taken care of?
Well, I had, I had an opportunity that I'd like for Dr. Baker, if he could jump in and help me out.
Why are you asking me?
Put you into this, man.
I'm not, yeah.
But I think that-
He's in one of those offices, I think.
I mean, and I'm not a computer guy, but I'm sure there's a lot of work that, if it has to be done-
Could be done from home.
Could be done from home, and can be done from their computer, and it doesn't require coming in, firing up the school's electricity, and at the same time, it would be a morale booster for our people.
Just note that the schools do stay heated, because we don't let the pipes freeze, but I don't want someone to say that.
Mr. Blaine, I'll just-
We don't heat schools.
I'll just add, Mr. Blaine, if, I can, I can at least attest for the folks that are in this room, they'll still be working. Whether they're physically in this building or not, they're always working. And so they'll, you know, we do have the ability to communicate in multiple ways if the board would like to follow through and approve Mr. Braswell's motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries six-zero. Dr. Meyer, did you have something?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, believe me.
Madam Chair, I did have one item. Asking the board on January the 14th, begin their meeting, begin its meeting at 6:30 and conduct the closed session at the end of the meeting, because some board members will be going to Richmond to attend the VSBA Capitol Conference, and that session ends at 5:30. So to be back here for 6:30, otherwise we'll have to leave much earlier. Is there, is there any problem with that?
Could you repeat the date, Dr. Meyer?
I think it's January the 14th. If I'm not mistaken, that is a Monday, and it's our first meeting of the new year. It's our reorganization meeting, and-
Do we have a second to move the start time for the January 14th meeting?
Second.
So the meeting-
Second by Ms. Shelley. So the motion is to change our start time, January 14th of 2019, to 6:30. We'll begin with open session and not do closed session until that conclusion of the business part of the meeting.
That is correct.
So there's a second by Ms. Shelley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero.
Ms. Grant, I do have one more new business.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. January 2nd, the teachers are due back in school for a teacher work day. It's, they're going to be working on report cards and grades and getting those completed. A lot of that as well can be done through the computer, because most of our grades are on the computer. But what I'm asking, because I know many, many teachers need to go into the, will need to go into the school, and if they have finished their grades, they might want to go in and organize and do such. I am asking the board to make January 2nd an optional, it's a teacher work day, but it's an optional work-from-home teacher work day. My motion is to make January 2nd an optional work, it's still a teacher work day, but it's as an option, the teachers may work from home.
Second, motion by Ms. Shelley, second by Mr. Braswell, to make Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019, an optional work-from-home teacher's work day. Dr. May?
Just a question. Has this been vetted with the superintendent and staff?
You should at least ask me about this one, too, you know? Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I know that, you know, many times those things now with technology, but at the same time, whether the principals was anticipating having staff there, that it can be worked out.
This, this particular day, just to remind the board, is a newer feature in our, in our calendar, and its intention was solely to be an unencumbered workday with no meetings and for, well, report cards and grades and really getting ready for, in this case, a new semester of instruction.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of making Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019, an optional work-from-home teacher's work day?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. Any more new business? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
And once again, to you all, a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we'll look forward to seeing you in January.